On August the 18th, the invocation this evening will be by Dwayne Smith from Abundant Life, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we acknowledge you tonight. I pray, Father, you say, if anyone would lack wisdom, he should ask for God who gives freely. Father, I'm praying for wisdom tonight. I'm praying for favor tonight. I'm praying for blessing tonight, Father. May we see Fergus prosper. But, Father, show your grace and your goodness tonight. We thank you. For it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please. A call to order, a call to meeting to order, and then roll call.
Yes.
Here.
Yes.
Here.
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 We have a quorum. The first item on the agenda is open forum. If anybody cares to speak, state your name and the city in which you live.
Robin Foss, Fergus Falls. I have a question on the fireman's donation. Was there one from the fireman's pancake feed? And was there a separate donation? Fund drive?
I believe there were two separate.
Two separate ones? Okay. Is there amounts that were collected for those?
It was $7,750 for the fund drive organized by Councilmember Leighton. I don't know what the number is for the pancake.
Were there any checks gathered from Mr. Leighton for that process?
Yes, there was.
And it was written out to the city of Fergus Falls that he collected?
I believe they were.
Yep, we deposited all of them, so.
Okay, so according to the Minnesota League of Cities, that is not the way it's supposed to process. A councilman cannot collect city of Fergus Falls checks and hold them. It has to go through the process of the city, having the checks go right to the city. And so I'd like to have that looked into. And I understand that the letters did not go out to every citizen in Fergus Falls. They went out to more high-profile, financial high persons and business people in this town. I'm just looking at the ethics of all of that. I've talked about ethics in the past and the code of conduct, and it looks like that is a pure violation.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Robin. Anyone else wishing to speak this evening? If not, we will move on to the approval of this evening's agenda. Would somebody care to make that motion or resolution? Motion?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Laura, seconded by Al. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Your Honor, I had one moved on, number three, in the consent agreement, moving resolution approving the 26 community arena rates to ordinances.
And it will just go to the bottom of the consent agenda and be dealt with as a separate item? Is that acceptable to Laura and Al?
Yeah, just so we have a conversation.
Right. So that would be the case. Thank you. The agenda is approved. First item on the agenda is the public hearings liquor license revocation, hearing for Stella's FF LLC. And there'll be a resolution revoking the liquor license for Stella's Fergus Falls LLC. Andrew, are you doing that?
Yes. Thank you, Your Honor. Councilmembers, good evening. On July 21st, the city received correspondence from the Department of Revenue requesting that we revoke the on-sale liquor license for Stella's FF LLC due to delinquency in payment of taxes dating back to February of this year. There's kind of two ways that this can play out. One is the city revokes the license this evening, and as soon as the business in question comes into compliance with those tax obligations, they can get the license back. If the city fails to revoke the license this evening and the state revokes the license, which they've indicated that they would, the applicant is not eligible for that license again for a period of five years. So it is in the business owners and the city's best interest to revoke this this evening, not leave it up to the state of Minnesota to do so. Per our city code, we have to allow the individual impacted by this public hearing, which is what we're doing this evening. So we can open up a public hearing, and then the council should pass a resolution revoking the liquor license for Stella's. As soon as they come back to us with a note of compliance, basically stating that they paid the past due amounts, the liquor license can be reissued and they can continue to operate.
With that, we will open the public hearing. Anybody care to speak to this topic? If not, the public hearing is closed. Would somebody care to make the resolution? Thank you, Al. Would somebody care to second it? Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. There are no bids to award, and there are no petitions and communications. The consent agenda consists of three remaining items: a motion approving the minutes from the August 4th, 2025 City Council meeting, and the August 13th, 2025 Committee of the Hall meeting, and the motion approving licenses, and a resolution authorizing the execution recording of relinquishment, appeasement document for the last swap site. Would somebody care to make that, offer that resolution to approve those three items?
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Scott.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Laura. Roll call, please.
Yes.
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 The resolution is approved. Councilmember Leighton, you asked for the removal of resolution approving the 2026 community arena rates.
Thank you, Your Honor. I've had a lengthy conversation with Bill in regards to the operation of the arena. Over the last couple of years, we've had, if you will, somewhat of a fund balance that appropriates funds for future capital improvements, equipment maintenance, or should, equipment replacement. The fund that he's been applying has typically recently been spent as we've gone through these last couple of years. Bill has come up with a recommendation this year with a reduction of rates, the three entities. I have reviewed the fund. I feel that the fund should be raised by $10,000. And that money sits in the bank for improvements of, be it pumps, refrigeration, hockey walls, et cetera, building. So as proposed, Bill asked for a $237 rate for the school from 225. We're splitting hairs here. I'm at 230. Likewise, with Fergus Falls Hockey Association, their current rates are 185. They anticipated 194. Their current rates is 194. They wanted to go to 185. I'm going to 188. And likewise, for the skating club, the current rates are 183. They wanted to go to 175 per bill, and I've taken it back to 177. In essence, that would fund, and the city of Fergus Falls also participates in this, in essence, making that fund balance budgeted at 40 to 50. I've had conversations with Bill. I don't know if he's heard anything back from the parties, but I would make a recommendation that we increase the, if you will, the fund of 40,000 to 50.
Would somebody care to make that resolution?
Yes.
Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Scott. Discussion? Bill, would you like to?
I'll just chime in a little bit.
Thank you, Bill.
So I did send an email. We did talk earlier today, so I knew what Mr. Leighton was thinking. So I sent an email out to the user groups and just said, this may come up of increasing that $10,000 and to that capital fund. I haven't really heard back specifically on that. I had sent out these rates previously to them and didn't, of course, receive any objection to it. You're not going to object to rates going down typically, so that's pretty typical. So I guess it's in your hands. I just wanted to let you know that I did reach out, but have not really had any dialogue with the user group, so.
Bill, does that need to be decided tonight, or what's the timeline frame on that?
Well, you technically could go to the next meeting if we wanted to do that a little bit. I believe the user groups have already probably set their rates for this season because they're taking registrations now. I think, Andrew, you're aware of that, right? So they are taking registrations now, so they've probably set their rates for the season, based on our prior discussions. Now, would this, you know, make a difference in that? I don't know. You know, I haven't had dialogue. And the whole goal behind this was, we switched our reconciliation period to the end of March each year so that we can get ready, so they can set their rates for, starting October, going through March. We historically have always set them on the calendar year basis, which wound up splitting it between their two seasons. It was easier for us, not so easy for them, so we did change to make that work with their seasons, so.
Hello?
So I think, long answer to a short question. I don't know if it would make any difference since they're taking registrations now, if we talk about it again at the next meeting or not, so.
Using Councilmember Leighton's numbers, how does that change, like, ISD 544, right now, we're proposing 131, 625, hockey 222, and 82, 250 for the skating club. How does that impact those overall numbers?
So you pulled those numbers from what I popped in the formula, right? And I don't have that with me. I just quick did it on the screen while we were on the phone, so I should actually rerun those and have numbers in front of people if we're going to do that, so.
To address the councilwoman, we're talking about $10,000. Quickly do the math. The city has 25% of it.
City has 17.5.
I'm sorry. The school district has 25% of that, $2,500. Hockey Association is 42% of it. Skating Arena is almost 16%, and the city's 18. So you're dividing this $10,000 between four people, four entities. I don't think it's a lot to ask. We have to maintain this facility. We married it, and obviously, it's an intensive piece of equipment and building to maintain. And I don't want to fall behind. Thank you.
Your Honor, one thing about it, we still are below the rates we were last year with the new rate, what you come up with. So they're still getting a reduction. I don't know what. They set their rates, but we haven't set their rates yet, so in a sense, they should have waited before we did, so.
Scott?
In your presentation, Bill, you said, when we had our discussion, would that be your discussion with each of the user groups, or was it a discussion within the staff? What was the discussion with the user groups?
So discussion with the user groups was like all during 2024, when we reworked the contract. And I know there was a lot of discussion about finding ways to reduce costs at the arena. That was kind of a driving force behind that. Now, electrical costs are going down some. We've had various, you know, times where Otter Tail Power has come in to work with us to see how that's operating, what we can do for reducing that. We also then did listen to the requests of the user groups, and we did transfer half of a FTE out of the arena, so actually working out in the park areas. So that was all the discussions. I did the reconciliations, built the budget that we've been working with for '26, so basing on that to come up with an estimate of what these rates could be. Now, I'm using '26 estimated budget, but we're starting rates that start in October. That's as good as we're going to do since we're off years. That's why I used to like it always being on our calendar year, because then it matched with our budget exactly. But when it's all said and done, everything is reconciled, and we either bill back if we undercharge or give refunds if we've overcharged, except for this capital account that Mr. Leighton's talking about. We don't apply that to the reconciliation because we are saving that up for these capital repairs. So we're not refunding or adding more to it. When we say we're going to bring in 40,000, or 30,000, or 50,000 into that, the goal is to keep that. We do spend out of that some each year, of course, if there's some capital repairs that go on.
So I suppose the question is, how much is in the capital account?
In that one, $191,500. And then we have another capital account. It's our old fund 224. These are leftover from the project funds of $292,000 about in that. So between the two of them, about $483,000. Historically, we used to have probably 1.2 to 1.4 million between the two. But if you'll recall, we purchased the chiller from the school, and so now we're on our own with the chiller, so we spent a good amount of that reserve to get that chiller rolling.
Thank you, Bill.
You bet.
Your Honor, I appreciate it. Bill, correct me if I'm wrong. What it looks like Mr. Leighton is trying to do is he's trying to build the pad a little bit for something that could go wrong, which probably does. And it just so happened, he's looking at this as there was a decrease in costs, so hey, maybe we can take the win as a city and put it in the capital account instead of a decrease to the users. Is that correct? Is that?
It's kind of, instead of as much of a decrease, bringing some of that back to put in here. So of that capital account, you know, we take the budget of the arena and we allocate it over the users, of which the city is paying 17.5% of that. So yeah, trying to build that capital account back a little bit, a little bit more, because I already moved it from 30,000 to 40,000, a $10,000 increase in that '26 budget. He's proposing bringing in 10,000 more, so raising it 20, for exactly that, to have money, more money set aside for those capital repairs.
And it just worked out for us this time. Electricity went down, and some things went down for us.
And personnel went down, yeah.
And personnel went down. So it worked out as a good time to maybe do this. I look to you, Bill. Is there, I know other than going against maybe the proposal you had or going against the user groups, sell me on why I wouldn't do this right now. Tell me the reason of why I should vote no against this. Otherwise, when I look at it from Mr. Leighton, I see it as a good deal for the city to pad it a little bit, so I'm asking.
Yeah. We would want to look through a capital plan on the community arena, which we put together some. I know the last I looked at that, I think I had 40,000 each year with that not being inflated, so '26 and on. And maybe by the end of '29 or '30, I know, Guy, we worked on this. I think we were in the hole like $5,000 on that, so that would argue to put a little bit more in that and inflate it. Now, if you do that now this year, yes, you're there. Do we estimate perfectly, of course, over the years? Of course, we don't. Things will come up. So I'm not answering your question very good. It's six of one, half a dozen of the other, so.
But I appreciate that.
Yeah.
I appreciate the honesty coming right from you, and I know I always get that, so thank you.
Right. Any further discussion? If not, roll call.
Leighton?
Yes.
Crimmins?
Yes.
Orson?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is odens and resolutions, a resolution approving the HRA 2026 levy. And I think if, this was discussed at the Committee of the Hall. If you need Michael Olson to go over anything, he's here and willing, I'm sure, to speak. If not, will entertain a resolution for this.
I'll offer, Your Honor.
Thank you, Scott.
I will second it.
Thank you, Jim. Any discussion?
Yes. Mike and I spent a couple hours on the phone today, and I analyzed this from our last meeting, what would happen if we went to zero. And it was just more of an opening comment, we would never go to zero. He has shared with me the importance of this entity. I have reviewed in depth the '24, June '24 numbers. This nonprofit is probably the nicest-looking nonprofit I've ever looked at. Got a balance sheet, they got profits. They're not excessively, if you will, salaried heavy. But over the years, I think, and Mike, correct me if I'm wrong, this levy's been based on, you know, the property values in Fergus Falls. And obviously, we've gone through some periods of increase, increase, increase. But really not tied to his operating expenses to a degree. In '24, we allocated 243,000. In '25, 256,000. And based on the numbers this year, they're requesting 270,000. He and I spoke today, and the magic number is anywhere from this line item on your real estate taxes is for HRA. And they're going to publish their budget to the county, as the city does. As a councilman, I'm trying to reduce the tax burden of this city to the taxpayers, and HRA just happens to be one of those lines. I was shooting for attempting to have this year's '26 budget allocation of 243,000, which was the same as '24. Without getting into the proprietary numbers of their balance sheet, I believe this is affordable for them. But again, I'm the outsider looking in, only with a couple hours with Mike. I respect him extremely. He's a very smart person. He knows what he's doing. It's obviously reflected in their operation and in their budget. I went in blind with Mike this morning without looking at his numbers, and I had 248 for this year's. So at this point, I'm not so sure what the flavor of the council is, but I would like to have this come in front of the levy meeting on Wednesday, invite Mike, so we could all sit down as the committee and then bring that to the council, rather than us, as a council member, eight of us, negotiating between 243 and 248. We're really splitting hairs. So with that being said, before I ask that this go to levy, Mike, please, please help me if I've made any improper statements.
No improper statements.
You're kind. Would you be in favor of this going to levy and coming Wednesday morning?
Absolutely. I'll come and visit, certainly.
I would make a motion then, or a resolution that this?
We have a resolution on the table to approve the resolution as is stated in the packet. So that would have to fail in order for you to make a subsequent resolution, or you would have to ask the people if they would. Actually, it's a resolution, so it would have to fail, I believe, before you could offer.
Would this council withdraw their resolution?
Does anybody have anything else to add?
I just, oh, go ahead, Mike.
No, go ahead.
I just think that we're splitting hairs, you know, with this. It's one point, what's the percentage, 1.8? The percentage on the tax?
0.0185%.
0.018, I'm sorry. And so we're talking, what, how many thousand dollars difference for you want to go and what you want to? I didn't hear the numbers exactly. What's proposed right now is how much?
He's proposing 269, and I'm looking at 243, 248.
So we're talking less than $20,000. It's not really, I think that's very little compared to over our city, and the HRA does a great job with their money. I'm on their board, or not on the board, I'm a liaison. And they do a great job with that money, and I would not want to reduce that. If we're going to give them a little increase, it will just go to make it better for people in this city. They give to so many different, 180 families a month, is that what it was? And so I just don't, I just don't look at trying to reduce that number for myself. I just think it's wrong. You help so many people, if you look at that, I know you have to look at, but I mean, there's so many people they do good for. And it's just a very minor amount of money for us as taxpayers. So that's where I'm standing. I won't withdraw. You guys can vote.
Your Honor, allow me to address the councilperson. We're primarily talking about the administrative cost of this office. We're not cutting anybody's funds anywhere for rental assistance. We're not cutting HUD's numbers. We have asked all our other departments in the city of Fergus Falls to cut their budget, and this is just another one where I'm going, you know, hey, Mike, where can we do this? These are administrative costs. They're not going to reflect any reduction of benefits.
Mike, you have a comment?
Yeah, Your Honor, I appreciate it. I appreciate Mr. Leighton for looking into this. I think he takes it to a level that's a little bit deeper than what the council has in the past. One of the things I want to make sure that we know, and I've got this right, we were talking about a 5% increase, right, Mike, for the year, and he's talking about a zero. I'm hopeful he's not talking about zero altogether. He's just talking a zero increase from 2024. Is that correct?
That's about where the numbers lie.
Yeah, so just a zero increase. So what he's looking at with that, the thing I need to know from you, Mike, because one of the things that I don't want to do, and I think if I was on the council, I'd be ashamed to do, is take away money from housing, affordable housing that people need a check, or they need this, or they need help. Are we doing that if this stays at a 0% at the 243,000? Are we truly paying out of that 243 the payroll to run the Fergus Falls HRA and to do your operations? Or are we, with that money, truly taking money from somebody that would get a check? Because I'm of the belief that a lot of your money comes in from HUD and other government entities, but if there's money coming out of this 243 that's going to checks to people strictly out of this money, then I need to know that tonight. Where does it lie?
Generally speaking, the local dollars that we levy in Fergus Falls are geared more toward operations than they are to direct assistance dollars to participants of program areas.
Okay.
That being said, just as a clarification, when we look at where the dollars come from, there's a lot of funds that come to us in federal dollars that are what we would consider restricted pods. They have to be used only for certain activities. Dollars like this tax levy, we have a little more opportunity with. So if we had a, if we were short federal funding, and we had a couple of families yet that needed help, we could direct this funding that direction, but we can't direct federal funding toward operations.
Yeah. Can you give me a basis of how often you've done that with this type of money over the last three years? Just, is it one time, two times? I just kind of need to know here.
Minimally, being very honest.
Okay. All right. So this is mainly operational money, and what Mr. Leighton is asking is he's saying, hey, instead of just kicking the 5% in there right away, let's sit down with the levy, let the experts that do the budget look at this and see what we can do. And it may land at a different number. That's if I'm correct. So, thank you.
Hello?
Yes, I'm wondering if the other members of the tax levy committee would find this helpful or necessary before we were to vote on this. It would be nice to hear from the other members of that committee.
I mean, for me, it's not our budget as such. I mean, we don't manage this budget fund. It's kind of a separate one that's housed in HRA, and they have a board that oversees it. So I don't, you know, the council is a liaison to that as opposed to even a board member of the board. So I'm not sure that bringing it to us gives any clarity to it as such. Laura?
Yeah, I mean, I would echo that. I mean, we're just now getting, you know, the first view of the operating budget. It's not anything that, you know, we've looked at before. I also want to be careful on, you know, I guess stepping on toes. It's, again, not a budget that we oversee.
Yeah. I mean, we have no oversight or control on it. So I think the decision this evening is that we have a resolution in front of us for, obviously, the levy at the rate, which was an estimated generation of 269,825. We do a roll call on that. If that fails, then obviously it would go to, we would need another resolution on what to do next.
Your Honor, one last question you brought up. You brought up something. You said you don't have any control over it, you don't have the ability to move it. Are you saying then that it would be just for not to even come to the levy? I mean, is it, if you don't have the ability to control it, it just, then this vote would be, no need to even have it? Is that correct?
The only vote we get is to impose the, the .0 levy to, on the, on the tax roll. But we have no oversight over the management of HRA. I don't believe. So, roll call.
No.
No.
Hartenson.
No.
Rachel.
Yes.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Quammy.
Yes.
The resolution is approved for the HRA levy.
Thanks for your time, Mike.
Moving on, and the next resolution is one to enter the MIN agreement 1060791, to share in the cost of the relocation and authorizing, authorizing the mayor and state administrator to execute the agreement for PI 5367, the TH 210 utility relocation project, and call upon Kyle Mack.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, so we received the agreement from the state of Minnesota for the agreement between us and the, and the state with regards to the relocation of the utilities on the Trunk Highway 210 project. That's where we're moving city water main and sanitary sewer main to get out of the right-of-way for the project up there. So we approved plans and specs last month and authorized advertisement for bids. So this is essentially the agreement from the state, which goes through a number of construction items that we have to take care of, which, which we are already doing, as well as just maintaining the cost of the project. And then the big thing in there is the, the cost share agreement between the city and the state. That is exactly what we talked about last month, as far as the cost. Again, that total project cost is $771,000, with the state share at about $640,000, and the city share at $131,000. So tonight, we're asking for a resolution for improvement of that agreement.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Laurel. Would somebody care to second it?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jim. Any questions? If not, roll call.
Yes.
Freymer.
Yes.
Morton.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Quammy.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. This evening, we have a second reading of Ordinance 70, the eighth series utility charges, and there was some language update with the implementation of our new system. So I believe that is a roll call, seeing as it's a second hearing.
Wait.
Yes.
Freymer.
Yes.
Morton.
Yes.
Rachel.
Yes.
Fish.
Yes.
Joel.
Yes.
Yes.
That resolution is also approved. And now we come to the main event of the evening. So it is the first, well, this is actually the precursor. And I did, I did wear my soccer tie, so hopefully we can score a goal this evening. So the first item is the first reading, Ordinance 71, eighth series, cannabis business and sales. And this was brought up about moving the, in the future, moving the distances back to 1,000 feet for public or private school, and the daycare to 500 feet from the 250 and 500 feet that is, it currently is at. So it's, do we need anybody to put it on the table? If it's an ordinance?
Well, it's a, since it's a first reading, someone just needs to introduce it.
Then somebody can introduce it.
I'd like to introduce it with an amendment.
Thank you, Scott.
The amendment, as it, as the ordinance was presented to us tonight, the minimum buffer requirements paragraph reads, starts with "any real property that received..." and blah, 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 blah. And then the last sentence of it says, "during the term of the interim use permit or any extension or renewal thereof." The whole point of an interim use permit is interim. This is for the time being, and then when the time is up, it's, by then, hopefully you've found a new place to do whatever the business might be. As was done in the past with other interim use permits for other types of businesses, that's the whole point. And so including an extension or renewal of it, that, that has to happen with each permit application. And so writing it into this is out of, out of place and inappropriate. And so my amendment would strike the words "or any extension or renewal thereof."
Can we ask, what is the implication of that? Somebody, can you?
Well, the implication is, and I, when I drafted the ordinance, my understanding was, is that, and you're correct, Councilmember Quammy, is that the purpose of an interim use permit is basically an interim use to, is to authorize an interim use for a period to allow the, the applicants to get into the proper zone. I mean, that's, that's basically what the purpose of the interim use permit is. My understanding was, is that if the applicants come to the end of their inner use, interim use period, they have the right to request another interim use before the council, and it's up to the council whether they grant that additional time or not. My understanding was, is that the, the amendment, the, that's delineated and read on the sheet that you have, was to make it clear that the buffer zone would not apply to interim use permits that were issued prior to October 1st of 2025 during the term of the interim use. I included the language, "or any extension or renewal thereof," because my understanding was, is that's what was requested, is that if they are granted such an extension, then the buffer would not apply to them. But you certainly can make that amendment. You've offered the, the first reading with that stricken, and so my understanding would be is that it is now stricken. So the implication is, is that it just, it doesn't, it doesn't set that and make it clear. But I certainly would understand that if an applicant would wish to make an application for an additional interim use permit once their period is up, that at that time, the council could decide whether to grant that and whether it could, whether the buffer zones would apply at that time. So, I mean, it makes no difference to me, and, but what's been offered is the, with that language stricken.
Does that language being stricken then make it so, in essence, the investment that these businesses have put into interim use locations is more at risk? Because, I mean, if, if people are having to do a lot of work to make these buildings meet all of the state codes and rules, and so are we going to make this a lot harder for them to want to make that investment if in three to five years, depending on how long that interim use has been approved? To me, this would feel a lot more at risk if I were the business owner, but maybe I'm interpreting this wrong.
Well, I mean, your interim use period is only good for a period of time. You don't get an extension on it without coming back before the council.
Mike?
This, thanks, your honor. This one's more for Mr. Nicomole. So when they come back, let's say we have a five-year conditional use or interim use permit, when they come back, your wordage that you had there before Mr. Quammy took it allows them to get an extension based off of the prior 250-foot, the, what they were grandfathered in at that point, right? What he's asking for is that at the end of that five years, they're done, and they have to, I don't want to put words here, Scott, but they have to, that permit is gone, so to speak. There's no renewal unless they come for a full new application. Am I correct with that? So I, I know, because I'm trying to catch this on the fly.
Correct. Yeah, I mean, a new application's a new application. And the law at the time would, buffers probably would apply then. Without, without that language, it, it, there would be a very good argument to say you are not permitted to because you fall within the, the expanded buffers at that time.
Can I make another comment, your honor? As a business individual, I don't think I can go down this route with Mr. Quammy, for the simple fact that I don't know who's going to get a cannabis license. I really don't. I don't think anybody here knows. But if you take Elevate, and you don't allow them to, and you take Sugar High, and you take Vido, and you don't allow them to at least extend their agreement, those three businesses for sure, well, I shouldn't say for sure, but based off of the 500-foot rule, will be out of business at the end of their interim use permit. You know, Elevate's 300 and some feet to the, to the splash pad, Sugar High is 300 and some feet to a daycare, Vido's 400 feet to the splash pad. So virtually, with Mr. Quammy's wording, those businesses in five years will be done. They need to do whatever they can, or they have to move altogether. Am I correct with that?
Yeah, that's, that's a reasonable interpretation.
Okay.
So once this is offered, your honor, like, if that's been changed, how does this work?
My suggestion is, is why don't you, why don't you offer a motion to strike it? And if that motion, to strike the language, if that motion carries, it's stricken, and then that would be the first reading. If it's not stricken, then I would offer a motion to authorize the proposed first reading of the ordinance to be as presented to you. And if that passes, then that would constitute the first reading.
Would you care to make that motion, Scott?
Yes, I would.
All those in favor say aye.
You probably get a second to that.
What was the motion, please?
The motion is to strike the words "or any extension or renewal thereof" at the end of section 121.12.
Thank you.
So we need a second.
I'll second, your honor.
Thank you, Scott. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I think that was just Scott. All those against, same sign.
Aye.
Aye.
I think the motion is defeated. So now we need a motion to accept the ordinance first reading as presented.
I'll offer that.
Thank you, Laura. Would somebody care to second that? Thank you, Scott. All those in favor say aye.
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 All those against, same sign.
Aye.
The, the motion is approved. First reading is complete. And now we come to a resolution accepting cannabis registrations.
There was, I had mentioned earlier, though, that we were going to, did you want to do that under new business, or it was now?
No, as Councilmember Quammy has another item regarding ordinance, if you care to cover that now, Scott, that's probably a good time to do it.
Okay, thanks. Within this conversation on how these businesses operate, when we've, as a cannabis committee, we're discussing some of the details, one of the things that was never contemplated, and it was never even included in any of the state information that we saw to any, any degree, was how the business would actually get the product to the customer. And it was just assumed that they'd walk in, go to the counter, buy it, and go out with their bag of whatever. I've become aware now, as I'm looking through the details of some of the current applications that we have, that at least one of them is intending to offer curbside pickup. That's a different ballgame altogether. If you're going to bring product out to a drive-up or through a drive-through, the next thing you know, it's a home delivery, and then the whole idea of how this is done is, is different than the way that we were seeing it in the beginning. I looked through, and I spoke with our attorney about where the details were and the state recommendations, and there really isn't any clarity on this that we could find, certainly nothing that I could find. And so I'm going to offer a motion to ask the city attorney and staff to draft an amendment to our code that would restrict sales to in the building with no curbside pickup, no home delivery, and no drive-through available options.
Yeah, I, we talked about this beforehand, Scott, and, and, you know, the city's authorized to place reasonable restrictions on the place, manner, and time of the, of the activity. My quick review also is, there is the ability to provide transportation with a state endorsement of some nature. And I, I haven't reviewed this in that light at all. I hear what you're saying, and, you know, if, 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 if we're able to, I, I assume we can, we can limit the, the, the sales to, you know, a place, and that would be the registration, actual physical address of the registration. I'm not sure if we could limit, limit it to only in there, or if we could allow for curbside pickup. But if this is something the council wishes for me to review and provide, come back with a proposed ordinance, I'm happy to do so. But what I hear you saying is you do not wish to have a curbside pickup if, if we, if, 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 if we can limit the location to in the building, and that's maybe something that we can do, but I just haven't had a chance to review that.
Yeah, and I didn't expect that you'd have an answer for us tonight. So in that regard, I guess that's why I was expecting to, you know, offer this to go to the attorney and the staff to review, and then come back with, again, the desire to limit the business to just within the building, without any drive-through, without any curbside pickup, and without any home delivery options.
So we need a second for that.
You know what, I'll second it.
Thank you, Mike. Robin?
Robin Foss, Fergus Falls. The same thing could be said, because of the liquor stores, you don't have drive-up service. So I would say that, you know, the same type of thing would apply in sorts, that you don't have drive-up for the liquor stores either. So I would think that would apply the same, same thing. They're not apples and apples, but kind of the same concept. So that's all I-
Thank you.
Your honor, thank you. I respect everybody's opinion here. The state of Minnesota has given us a 55-gallon barrel of rice, and we're trying to find one black seed, the wild rice of northern Minnesota. As we go down this line, this week, there's one rule, next week, there's another rule, next week, there's another point that we should consider. My recommendation would be that this council break down into two groups, so we don't have a quorum. Group A talks about it, group B talks about it, we bring it back. I think this is deeper than staff, no disrespect to them, but we've got eight minds here, maybe nine or 10, that all need to have a discussion on this. It very well could be a Sally Port, where there's secure deliveries, 24-hour monitoring, on-staff security during the business hours, et cetera. So as this thing moves down the river, meanders from right to left, I really believe that this, this should be, any more discussion or any more ordinances should be brought in front of subcommittees and brought in front of the council as a group.
Any, anybody else?
Can I just say something? Be all right?
Yep, Chris.
Chris Stock, Fergus Falls. That was my application that I put in, where the Greenwood LTD, whole process going on there. But to speak on the pickup area, that's to reduce the congestion. So a lot of other states do this. They do it very well. All the business is actually done inside. You are actually just outside getting their credit card, or their, I mean, their cash and their ID, bringing it back in, verifying everything, and then bringing their order out to them. That's all you're doing. It'd be the same if they came in and then left with the product. So everything is still the same. This is just really reducing congestion. And that's one thing that I think that everybody could agree with, is it's going to be busy. So any way we can reduce the congestion downtown is a very good way. And Michigan does this all the time, so if you look at Michigan laws, I, I would suggest on doing that. And then we can't have an actual drive-through window. The state already has it in the, in the laws. So there's quite a bit of stipulations to how we can actually physically do a transaction. This is just kind of a way to reduce congestion, so.
Thank you, Chris.
I just am kind of curious, if you think there's going to be congestion, why did you want to be downtown?
For a few different reasons. One, there's not many people that would actually rent to us, and in the industrial parks, there's no businesses out in B6, unless I have the money to build a brand-new facility. The only viable places is B3. The rent is cheap. We're redoing downtown to help it make it look better, nicer, more attractive. We're bringing business downtown to a ton of stores. bringing business downtown to a ton of stores. I just think it makes sense to keep us downtown, where everybody is, where all the local shops are, so we can try to help them out as much as we can.
Thank you, Chris. Right, with that, we have a motion on the, on the floor requesting that the city attorney and staff look at an ordinance that restricts product sales to within the building only. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against, same sign.
Aye.
I think there's just a two against, so it's, the motion is approved to ask the city attorney to look at that and bring it back.
And Your Honor, I would appreciate your delivery of breaking this thing down into two groups, and we have some subcommittees.
When we've tried to do that before, Mark, you've been one that has always said that that's not the right thing to do, and that we want transparency and to have this discussion in an open forum.
And I appreciate that. It worked very well, it worked very well when we named a new police chief. I'm just trying to limit the conversation and the confusion in the council meeting and bring something. There's too many items in this thing. Thank you.
And I think unfortunately, they're gonna come up each time we come across one. With that, that concludes ordinances, and we move to a resolution accepting cannabis registrations. Submitted applicants include NB2A Investment LLC, Sugar High Cannabis Consulting and Dispensary LLC, VTDO LLC, and Greenwood Roots Limited. And I think as you will all recall, the council at the last meeting made the decision that they would accept applications on a first-come, first-served basis. Staff has put together a summary for each applicant and brought it back to council. There was no definition of what is first-come, first-served. And as Councilmember Leighton has alluded to, there is eight or nine, 10 opinions on what is first. So I think as a, as a council, you have to come to a consensus as to who, who and how you define first. So with that.
Your Honor, are you ready for the resolution?
Yep. Okay. Well, is it a resolution?
Yep.
Okay.
Your Honor, I make the resolution that we accept the first-come, first-served applicant that had a completed application timestamped to receive a, you'd call it a pre-approval cannabis license in the state of Minnesota. That's my resolution.
Would somebody care to second that?
Second that.
And some definition of what you call the first applicant complete to the city?
Yes, first applicant complete to the city. I think that was, you want me?
Yeah.
Okay. I think that was always the intent that I had, and, you know, I shouldn't assume anything, especially on the council, but it was first-come, first-served, full application. Didn't know if one would come in an hour, didn't know if one would come in a few days, had no idea who was pre-approved, none of that. I just wanted to make an absolute level playing field for these applicants, that there would not be a favoritism or a bias if we went into a, a selection process based off how people score it. I wouldn't want that as a business. I didn't want that for them as a business, whoever the, the first one was. To take it just a little bit farther, I thought there was a little pushback at the committee of the whole, that this was something really strange, or odd, or first-come, first-served was, was somehow improper. So today I looked around just quick, in about 15 minutes, found that there was at least a dozen cities that did the same thing. Went into their ordinances, went in to look at their sites, and they went with a first-come, first-served for the same reasons that I felt it was appropriate for these businesses. They were the city of Albert Lee, Brainerd, Champlin, Duluth, Eagan, Farmington, Hastings, Monticello, Oakdale, New Brighton, Roseville, and West St. Paul. And so there's, there's a real reason behind this, because I believe that if the state has given you a pre-approval, and you've done what we need in your application, that you should receive a license first-come, first-served. Now whether that's one, two, five, wherever we get to, I don't know. But for the very first one, since we put that in front of the council, I believe that it should hold for the very first license, for sure.
So, so that would be, that would be VT, oh, sorry, Jim.
I have a question. You're saying one. Our ordinance says we can law two.
I, yes, is that right, Your Honor? Yes, that's a bigger discussion, I think, Jim. I'm, I'm just saying the first one, if we want to decide as a council, second in takes second, third in takes third, that's, I think the council can do that. That's a fair process in my mind, it is. I'm just saying the very first one, because I think it'll take a little more effort for the council to get to the second one. I'm assuming we have to decide whether we're gonna do a second one. Now, Mr. Nicomole might have some other information on that, but you're right, it could be the second one. Now, if this council gets to where they're like, okay, we voted unanimously to allow that first license to come in, first-come, first-served, and then you want to have the second, third, fourth go into more of a, a pool like you had before, that's the council's decision as well. I'm, I'm just stating from a business standpoint, that first-come, first-served is the easiest, most unbiased favoritism that you can have, no matter what it is. And that's what I'm looking for, for my decision, and also for the businesses.
Thank you. Scott?
I'm not sure if I want to step into this yet or not. There's been some discussion about this quite a bit, and I believe, last week when we talked about this, I was on board for the first-come, first-served, but now after discussing it with different staff and, and other council members, and trying to figure out where we're gonna be at on this, I don't think it was fair to the, we set up this basis of September, Clara, can you help me? September through the October 8th, was it not?
It was August, August, something.
I'm sorry, August 8th through September, I'm sorry. And so when we come to that conclusion of a first-come, first-served, and I agree with Mike, it's a business thing, but yet we laid this out first, so everybody knew what was going on. And now it's like, who's the first one to get that baby in? Now, is it the first one that gets the completed one, or the first one to just put their name on something, said I want a license? Because there was none of them that were complete, I don't believe. I'm not gonna put this on Clara, because she's not gonna make that decision, when, who the first one was. It was a complete, or was it just a name, and then they had to come back and fill it out some more? I don't, I don't know. We didn't, we had no clarification on that. I mean, it was, took a few days to get everything done at the end. And I don't know who the first one is that completed it, or whatever, and I don't, we're not putting Clara in that spot. That's not her job. She's just there to help people fill it out. But it's not her job to say, yeah, this was first, second, third. We threw it at her. She was at, or we were at, 8th to 8th. And so I think we made a mistake on that part of it. And then to go back to the vetting system, or the, the, what's the word I was looking for, the?
Merit.
Merit system, yes. And then lay it out, I believe. This is still not a legal drug in this United States. It is in Minnesota, and it's, it's the worst thing you could, we, here we are sitting, trying to argue about this, who's gonna get that license? And I just, I want to do it right. I don't want to rush into it. But it's not gonna go on staff, see who stamped that thing first, who's number one. I don't believe that's right.
I don't, I think, I don't think that is the case. I think it's, it's, it's documented as to who sent in what, when. And so, as you say, it's, it's down to the council to say their interpretation of first.
It was a unanimous vote.
It was.
And, you know, the thing is too, Scott, is, you know, you did this before with the distances. And, you know, when you came back and says, you know, some new information came to me, so we need to revote this. So here it comes back again. So this is the second time now you want to do this. And I think, you know, the process is, there's no outline for it that I see, and it seems like the outline keeps changing. We're trying to do the best we can here. That's gonna be free enterprise for everyone. You know, this was set up with the last administration, basically. And now we're trying to deal with this. We need to be, follow through with what we vote on. And I know that it was even came up last, or Wednesday morning this, last week. A council member says, well, if I had a, you know, I, I wouldn't have voted for that. Well, you did. It was unanimous. And the first person got in, and that's the first app. You know, and if you want to change it back after the first app is done, then change it back. We'll vote on it then. But we're trying to change this midstream here. You know, this, it's getting to look ridiculous.
I mean, at some point in time, we have to vote on this, but.
Mr., we did change the midstream last week. We had this thing set up. It was all done, and then you, you guys wanted to change it. I agree. I thought, you know, it'd be a good idea. That, we, I want to go back to where we were at the beginning, what we set up. You changed it in the midstream, not us. I went along with it. I agree. But no, that's not right. And I have the right to change my vote, because it's, because it's, that's what's in our, in our charter, so we can do that. But let's just have a discussion, vote it up or down, wherever you want to do, what the resolution is on the floor. I mean, I.
I guess if it's okay with Your Honor, I would like to hear from the three applicants that are in there. I don't know that all four are, at least three are. If they would like this looked at from the merit situation, I mean, if this is business-friendly, to me, are they looking for the merit, or are they looking for first-come, first-served? Is that reasonable?
I, I, I don't think so, actually. I don't think, I think we know what, what that is. I think this council has to make a decision and stick by it, whether it's right or wrong. So I think it's, there is, but I think, Mike, you're saying first, who, who do you define as being first complete?
Well, I'm waiting for staff to. I'm not making the decider. It's in the, well, the timestamp is right there. I think you've got it.
I mean, basically, if the first one is, in my opinion, it's VTDO, because they had it in 8:524 or 11:40 a.m. And the second group was Sugar High at 8:51258.
Yep, that's the way I read it, Your Honor, same.
So, so you, you have a resolution on the floor, giving a license to VTDO LLC. So we shouldn't do a roll call.
If we vote this down, is this denying their application permanently, or is it just not offering it right now?
It's, it's, you're, you're, you have a motion, basically a resolution on the floor to pass a registration. It's not a license. So, I mean, if you vote it down, the registration is not issued at this time.
Don't you first need to determine how many licenses you're issuing, one or more, before you decide that you're voting or not?
No.
Well, you can do them as a case-by-case basis.
Fair. Anthony?
Sorry.
Can I speak?
Yep.
All right. I'm gonna side with Scott Rachel's. I believe that we did make a mistake in the way that it was interpreted, that first in was the winner. Actually, during that conversation, which I think is a good example of how this has gotten muddy, I don't know that my understanding was that it was automatic, that the first one got it automatically because they were first. But that by being first, that would be one of the factors by which they were judged or weighed. To be fair to business isn't to allow the kind of chaos that created by having people rush in here the next day. And even the states that, and the cities that you mentioned, for having their first-come, first-served process, there would have been a window of time for people to know when that was coming. It didn't just happen overnight. And all of the state's processes have been given with, on such and such a day, this window opens. On such and such a time, this is what happens. And there's a timeframe for the businesses to get their stuff together. Having that happen overnight is, is certainly not what I anticipated. And I don't think that it's fair to the businesses that are applying. And I think that I'm gonna speak in favor of voting against this resolution so that we can get to a better method that fairly gives each of the applicants a chance at being accepted.
So we have a resolution on the floor.
One more second, Your Honor? Is that right?
Yeah, and then we call for the vote after that.
You know, I, I appreciate Mr. Kwame and the things that he said with it, but these cities, they didn't lay out exactly how they did it. They voted on it as a council, and then it went forward. We had two choices here as a council to say it wasn't fair. The one choice was, we've had our local companies watching this for three years, whether they're in person, on TV, have somebody here. They would have heard this immediately from that council decision that went on. Anybody outside of this city would have had to wait to hear it. So in my opinion, we favored local businesses by doing it right away. If we had set a date, in my opinion, like a Tuesday at 7:00 a.m. or 8:00 a.m. on the, on the door here, we could have had four or five applicants shoving against each other who gets in the door, and it would have been like a Black Friday. That's not a scene that we want in this city. This was a, this was a first-come, first-served. They had to get their applications in order, and I believe that was the proper way. You wouldn't want to make a date and have them be on the, the front door.
Roll call, please.
What's the motion, please?
The motion is to approve a license for VTD.
Thank you.
Or registration, a cannabis registration for VTD.
Leighton?
Yes.
Kremer?
Yes.
Mortensen?
Yes.
Rachel?
No.
Killie?
No.
Fish?
No.
Joe?
No.
The resolution fails.
Your Honor, I'd offer the resolution that we go back to our original process and the original date.
I'll second it. So Laurel and Scott are proposing that we go back to a window of opportunity for applications and utilizing a, the selection policy that was in place, or put in place for all applicants. And we would have to revise the dates.
If they're in already, they can stay in as far. I don't think they'd have to resubmit it.
I think there was some additional documentation for the selection process that applicants would need to submit.
I just think that people watching this are just shaking their heads, going, man, this is crazy. This is crazy stuff. I can't believe they vote on one thing one week and something else the next. You know, I guess, I'll ask the five if, if you're gonna stick with that next week, or are we gonna do something different? I just, I, I just can't believe this. It's just a comment. I, I can't believe we voted on something, it went through. There was one company that actually was first-come, first-served, and you turned them down. Unbelievable.
So roll call, please.
No.
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 Rachel?
Yes.
Killie?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Yes.
The resolution is approved. And now we'll need to set dates for that next period, and that we'll need to come back to a committee of the whole and a council meeting for those dates to be introduced.
Can we get staff recommendation on that?
And now staff had looked at dates as to what would most likely align. Do you, do you know them off the top of your head?
Well, I think previously, yeah, Your Honor, members, I think previously it was contemplated 30 days, but you're talking a month. So if you were to put the process in play today, 30 days from now is September 18th. Looking at a calendar, there's five Mondays in September. Committee of the whole would then be October 1st. So the packet would go out on the 25th for that meeting, which would give staff about a week from the deadline to pack it to ensure that everything was complete and orderly and ready to be submitted for all of you to begin review. That would then push us to the October 6th city council meeting for hopefully a decision on who would be issued registrations, and how many, and all those things that need to be decided.
Thank you, Your Honor, please. Who's gonna, who's gonna come up with this grid? Who's gonna come up with the rating system?
There is a selection policy already established.
How old is that?
December, I think, of '24. Yeah, '24.
Has it changed yet?
No.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna throw a hail, I'm gonna throw a hail mary.
Unless you changed it, Al.
Ralph, I'm gonna throw a hail mary. You ready? I don't know if that ordinance is legal. I think that ordinance was sworn in on January with an old ordinance, with the old council, when Ben Shire allowed it to be, he allowed the old council to make that motion. I would question that. Thank you.
The cannabis selection policy was approved on December 2nd, 2024 by resolution 225-2024.
In December. I stand corrected. Thank you.
And it's not an ordinance, it's a resolution.
It's not an ordinance, it's a resolution. It's a policy.
Yep.
Can I ask a question, please?
Yep.
One minute. Thank you. Emily McKeown, Fergus Falls, co-owner of Sugar High. Given the decision to reopen the merit-based system for issuing registrations, one thing, I don't know what the timeline or trajectory looks like, and I don't need to know that today. But one thing that came up in discussion with my business partner is, what process is going to be in place to ensure fairness in that structure and an unbiased decision? And there is some confusion and a lack of clarity pertaining to the, I'm vocally in favor of the merit system, but as far as, you know, one, for example, one of them is, should the applicant provide a business plan? That was 12 points. Well, is that a hard and fast 12 points or zero points? And are these going to be viewed blindly? We have reason to believe there's conflict of interest on the council, and so it's just important to us as business owners that we are insured a fair and unbiased point scoring system. And so I would encourage and request that you discuss and consider this, and then make that known to us before we are due to provide these materials for the merit scoring system. That's it. Thank you.
Your Honor, I guess I've been arguing the same thing. This thing is a moving target. There's so many things to address. There's cities over 12,500 that are only going to allow one store. There's other stores, other cities, other communities that need a Sallyport. Other cities require 24-hour armed guards or security services. We're not ready to make this. And I also agree, the subjectiveness of this grid, if you will. It's quite obvious that there is a division of the House on these eight council people. And if it's going to be favored one way or the other, it's going to be eight to three. I believe there should be some real neutral questions or gridding on this. And I'm sorry, I can't remember what that is, but we can make numbers and flavors of many colors. Thank you.
I think it'll be up to each council member personally to look at the applications and score them themselves. And so, that would take out any, obviously, yes, if some are biased towards one, and some may be biased towards the other, but we have gone back to a scoring system. So the next item on the agenda is something a lot more simple, and a lot less contentious, and that is a presentation of claims for $889,337.62. Would somebody care to make a resolution?
There's a second one there, too, Your Honor.
And I think that's just...
That's the total.
That's the total.
The total is written, okay. I'll offer the resolution, pay bills.
Thank you, Jim. Would somebody care a second then?
I'll second.
You're out of discussion? I changed my mind, I don't want to pay the bills.
Thank you, Scott. Discussion?
Yeah, I want to ask Bill about the two invoices. What's the meaning? I've never seen, that's the first time I've ever seen this.
Two reports?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, with the new system, we are not able to get them into one report right now, because the second one has things like pre-councils and wire payments we had to make, and it's separating them, and we don't have it where they can combine. So, eventually, I would hope we can, but I can't promise that.
Thank you much.
Mayor, I'll be abstaining. I'm receiving a commission on one of the bills that's being paid.
Thank you, Scott. Roll call, please.
No.
Kramer?
Yes.
Mortensen?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Fish?
Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Katie?
Abstain.
The resolution is approved. Obviously, one abstention and one no. There is no old business, unfinished business, there is no new business.
Your Honor, I hate to go backwards, but I don't know that as staff, we landed on a process, or dates, or times. If the council's good with the dates and time, or the dates that I read via this calendar, great, but I want to hear that from the council. And then, obviously, you know, if anybody else wishes to submit an application, they still have the ability to do so through the date in which you guys decide to close that process. So, I'm sorry to go backwards on that topic, but I don't want to leave here without clarity.
So basically, what we're saying is, close, I mean, we're kind of open for applications as it is already. So, applications would close on the 18th of September. They would be reviewed on the October 1st Committee of the Whole, to be presented to the council for a decision on October 6th. Would somebody care to make that resolution?
I'll make that resolution. I got a question, too.
I do, too.
Would somebody care a second then?
I can second it.
Thank you, Laurel. Question?
With the applicants that are in right now, they'll be allowed to pull their applicant back and add to it, or make a different thing. I think that'd be okay, one or not?
Mm-hmm.
You know, because they have a timeline to get it, and if they want to add to it or do something. You know, the Elevate one's a very nice-looking one he did, but the other bunch, you know, they should have a chance to look and do what they want to. I think it would be very, you can't just say, no, this is it. Yeah. Okay, that was clarification.
My clarification is, are we as a council going to take up the one versus two, the those things prior to the night of applying, or addressing these, so we have a plan going into it, and it's not all bundled together?
The city attorney has drafted a memo, which got distributed, that states, obviously, that legally we are obligated to deliver two licenses. So maybe we can put that on the Committee of the Whole, but I think it's...
And the proposed ordinance you just had a first reading on does indicate two registrations.
So we have a resolution on the floor specifying the dates that applications are open until the 18th of September. The first discussion will take place on October the 1st for a Committee of the Whole, with a council meeting decision day of October 6th. Roll call.
No.
Kramer?
No.
Mortensen?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Fish? Yes.
Joe?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
The resolution is approved.
The group left, before we clarified, if you want to re-add to your registration, it's not stuck here. You know, if you want to go look at it and change some stuff, you can more welcome to do that before the end of the date. So just so you know that. It's not stuck with us. You can come and get it and change it, add to it, whatever you want.
Thank you.
Your Honor, may I have one question? Are you, Ralph, I'd like to have clarification between the statute and the League of Minnesota's position on having one or two. I'm seeing other communities in Minnesota that have populations of 19,000, and they're only naming one. The statute says one. I've heard this council refer to statutes poorly written, understood. What is an attraction? The court hasn't determined what an attraction is. I don't believe the court has determined.
Will you stick to the point of...
Yeah, my point is, how do we know that the interpretation by the league is what the statute says?
This is also the interpretation of the Board of, or Office of Cannabis Management. They have changed their interpretation of that, and my memo to the council sets forth that the current version of their manual guide to the Minnesota cities clearly says that cities that have 12,500 residents must issue one. If your city has 12,501 resident, you must issue two. The League of Minnesota Cities is on board with that interpretation. That's my recommendation to the council, is that under the state statute, at least as how it's being interpreted by the Office of Cannabis Management and the League of Minnesota Cities. Now, you can differ with their interpretation, but at least as to how it's being interpreted today, that requires the City of Fergus Falls to issue at least two registrations. So, in that light, I mean, if you want to just issue one registration, there's, I mean, and run the risk that you're not going to get sued by the state of Minnesota by saying, you must issue two, you can certainly do that, but I don't recommend it. They have more money than the City of Fergus Falls. They will, they will pursue this, in my opinion, through litigation. And just by virtue of the fact that the League of Minnesota Cities and the Office of Cannabis Management are taking these interpretations, I think we got to heed those interpretations and give them some weight.
Well, I'm surely not advocating that the city take on the state of Minnesota, but that's not how, you know, if you will, the statute reads. And I appreciate your input, and I appreciate the Office of Cannabis Management. Thank you.
Ralph, just a question for Ralph. Is there any issue with VT Vido coming back to the City of Fergus Falls, since they were the first come, first served, and now this changed after that went through? Is there any legal ramifications that could come towards the city, which they could pursue against the city or the council?
I don't believe so. I mean, I'm not concerned about that. I mean, if the council wishes to change its mind, it certainly can. You always retain that right. You could even, if you wanted to, just go strictly to a lottery system, too, if you wanted to. But, I mean, there's, you haven't issued any registrations yet, and so, we're getting to a point where...
It's legal stuff, man.
Where, these registrations are coming. And so just be prepared, you know, you're going to have to make some actions. And my recommendation is, you're going to have to have at least two. And you may want to have more, I don't know. It's up to you guys.
Might be municipal, who knows?
Well, municipal doesn't count in the two, though. That's the problem. So...
I think for the next meeting, or this meeting, I think I'm going to get one of those bingo things, where the balls pop up, so that way then, we can see who gets the registration. So basically, in legal opinion, we have that we are obligated to issue a minimum of two licenses.
Your Honor, just one second, just for Mr. Nicomole, again. How unusual is it to see a government entity, say the Office of Cannabis Management, make a reading or a basis of something when the statute, the legal law, is so different? The legal law reads straightforward, one. How can they do something like that? Or is that unusual, or is that just normal every day?
They're just interpreting the language differently than when they did originally. You know, this Office of Cannabis Management has been a moving target for all of us. We're trying to figure this out the best that we can. And right now, their interpretation is two, and my recommendation is, council, you're going to have to issue two, or else you may have some more issues on your hand. And the statute did not change. The statute still reads the way it does. Now, I may differ in their interpretation, but I'm going to, I'm going to heed the interpretation that they're coming up with. And I think it's reasonable, based upon how the statute reads. It doesn't say per, it says for. So, originally in the Office of Cannabis Management, their manual said per. And so, per could be interpreted as 12,500. For each 12,500, you have to issue one registration. But it says four. And so, for each 12,500, you have to issue one registration, and their interpretation is, now, once you hit 12,501, that means you have to issue another registration. And I'm not going to disagree with that interpretation either. I think it's reasonable, based upon how the statute reads.
Right. Thank you. With that, we have some announcements to make. The August 26, 5:00 p.m., a town hall meeting, a quorum of council members may attend. At this point in time, we don't have anybody signed up to lead that town hall. August 27, 7:00 a.m., a Committee of the Whole. September 1, holiday closure and observation of Labor Day. I think we'll need it. And garbage and recycling, normally picked up on Monday, will be picked up on Tuesday the 2nd. Tuesday collection will be picked up on Wednesday the 3rd. And